Committee.
Ready? You ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'd call the Service Committee meeting together at 6:00. Members present Steve Young, Sierra, and Sherrod Brenton Potter and myself as chairman. First on the agenda is public participation. Seeing none. We got the minutes from the February 23 meeting to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Aaron, second by Steve. Any more discussion on that? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to turn it over to Dylan Wyatt from McKeever Associates. And he's going to talk about the Northwest Sewer trunk line that they want to put in. So why aren't you on? He wants to... The reason we're first because he has another meeting added.
Oh, it's because he's first.
Sorry for throwing your schedule off here.
Yes, yes. No, we like to be first. No change.
So we've been working on a Northwest sewer separation project. The city actually got a grant for the engineering work for this project. It is up around the...near the Irving Street garage, starting on Willard Street, Bland, Minette, and then clear over to Garnet Court. So clear up around that area. There was previously a 42-inch storm sewer installed up to just north of the parking lot for the hospital in Willard Street. This project connects to that and then continues up to...up Willard Street to Bland and then up into the Irving Street garage. So we've looked at a few different projects as the city's been going through sewer separation and the long-term control plan. Three of these projects included this Northwest separation project, which was actually chosen for Phase Two of the long-term control plan, and then two projects in the south part of the city. So this one, our primary intention here is to get the stormwater...this is all contributory area to CSO 9, and specifically being the street garage, which flows through to Franklin Court, and kind of alleviating some of the problems up there with stormwater with such a large, hard surface area going there. So project will consist of roughly 800 feet of 42-inch storm sewer, ranging, you know, 19 to...somewhere 17 to 19 feet deep. It will separate 100% of the public sewers on Willard Street, and then the first portion of Bland, and then into the service garage. And then there's also a second part of the project that will separate on Hill Street, which will complete the separation on Hill Street going to CSO 12. Currently, estimate for the project, including contingencies, is $871,000. And then this...so this project opens up for two additional phases. One continuing...the first phase two would continue down Bland and then go back into Garnet Court and separate, do all the public separation in that area. And then Phase Three would run east on Bland and then turn and go up Minette, including Franklin Court and up to Irving Street. So Phase One of the project, we are currently at around 95% complete with construction plans. And we would like to be able to go out to bid on that project and build that project this year. Jeff Dunn has been working on this, talking with Cali about projected carryover for the end of the year for the storm fund. Current projected carryover is roughly $2.24 million. Then we have the Service Road project that you had previously approved, which is $237,000. And then if we include this project in for this year's budget, that would take another $870,000 out of budget, leaving projected carryover at the end of the year at roughly $1.1 million. So I guess I will ask if you have any questions specifically about the project?
I think here's our main objective.
Yes.
Yeah. So the big reasoning behind this project versus the other three we looked at is this project, since the main line has already been installed to the river, we have the opportunity to phase this project out. I mean, obviously, looking at this, we're probably close to a $2 to $2.5 million project overall if we include all three phases. But we're able to phase this out, and we're able to see improvements from day one, once we start this, as opposed to the other two projects in the south end that we looked at. They were more money, $3.7 million, $2.1 million, and they had to be done all at once before any improvement was going to be seen.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
As long as we keep showing improvement or that we're improving, then the EPA is fine. They're good. We...
Yeah, so part of the Phase Two of the long-term control plan, this project, the whole...all three phases was actually included in that. So this is us showing our good faith efforts to completing Phase Two of the control plan.
Okay.
I don't know if this has anything to do with it, but I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so downtown, there's a whole lot of water. Like, a lot of the businesses, you can walk in, you can smell the moisture. From working at a few of them, I know that, you know, it storms and their basements have water, and it's bad. Does this help alleviate some of that, or is it too far north still?
This will likely not help them. No, this will not. The downtown projects are going to be substantial separation projects. That this is...right now, the interceptor sewer is so overloaded that we're...with this project, while we are taking stormwater out of the interceptor, we're primarily helping the residents in that immediate area.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that would help alleviate...like, I didn't...I don't know, you know, when it comes to how overloaded we know it's been, if that's going to let some of that up and give a little more of a break to downtown until we can get there.
Probably, probably not. We're far enough upstream that this is...
That's what I was wondering.
Nobody downtown's going to see a difference from this specific project.
And this is done in conjunction with the Holy Trinity project you guys did?
Yes, so...that was 2018, roughly. We had done a storm sewer project, design on a storm sewer project for Holy Trinity. This project gives them basically an adequate outlet that enables them to tie in with what their current design is.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Do you have any more...anybody have any questions? We can refer this and then to the Finance Committee.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
We'll do that.
I need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Aaron, a second by Brenton, to refer this project to the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Dylan. Thanks, Jeff, for coming up.
Thank you.
Anything on the open projects we want to discuss at this point?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none. Any more on the public participation?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. I just noticed on the Service Committee minutes, it states Spiegel called Economic Development Committee.
Uh-oh. I missed that.
Yeah, we missed that. We all missed that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pass those as amended.
Amended minutes.
Correct that. Correct that.
I did check all the others.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay.
So, Aaron?
Aaron made a motion to amend her motion to do it, and Brenton, one second?
Steve was the second.
Steve's second again.
Okay. A second by Steve again. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
By putting the Service Committee in there. Okay, motion carries. Okay. Seeing nobody else, meeting adjourned at 6:10.
Health and Safety Committee, March 9, 2023.
Call Health and Safety to order at 6:10 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First item is public participation. Does anybody have anything for the Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none. You have in front of you the minutes for the February 23, 2023, regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. McKeever and a second by Mr. Young. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Up next in the open projects list, we have the taxi cab, and Mr. Gurner has completed a proposed ordinance. I know I've got a couple of questions, but I'll open up to you guys first. Mr. Young, do you have any questions yet?
Yet, yeah.
All right, Mr. Wireball?
No.
Mr. McKeever?
I'm reading.
Okay.
While you guys read, one of the questions was Lyft and Uber services. The Ohio Legislature has defined those as transportation network companies, and state law has preempted local regulation, so those are all controlled through Columbus. They have to apply through the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio for licensure, and then taxicabs are almost entirely regulated here at the local level, so we really can't pass anything.
Kind of what I thought, so appreciate you checking on that. Couple of questions I have. On the first page, under the 381.01...I'm sorry, 381.02, the license required, the third paragraph down where it talks about the violations, and they're subject to a fine in community service. Now, on this instance, is this the license for the business, not the driver, correct?
That would be the license for the driver, not the business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that...381.02 is the person, 381.03 is the business/vehicle.
Okay. That was my question, because I was going to ask, who are you going to hold responsible for community service hours if we had to list a responsible person? So I had them backwards. So on 381.03, that's why there's nothing in there about anything, it's just a fine.
Well, there is community service in that one as well. I copy and pasted it. That's just a fine for the...so unclassified misdemeanors under Ohio revise code are 500 hours of community service and up to $1,000 fine. But theoretically, I suppose it would be the owner of the vehicle that's driving an unregistered taxi cab.
Okay. Just one question I had, and this was not in any language you changed, this was from the original language. When more than one such taxi cab shall be operated by such person, an additional fee...do we want that to say by any company or corporation rather than a person?
Yeah, registered.
I don't know if there's a way...a person and/or corporation, because if...it might be an LLC or something. That was just a question I had on that one.
Great.
On 381.04, under the insurance, the same question, the second word there in that paragraph, no person. I think we might want to add and/or corporation or company. And then, in the language you changed, after you talked about $1 million, combined, single limit, commercial, I think we want to include the word automobile policy so that they don't come to you and say, oh, I've got a commercial liability policy, that's good enough. So it should say commercial automobile policy. And then, in the end of that paragraph, something you didn't change, it previously said to give 10 days written notice. Industry standard is 30, and some are 45. I would suggest either changing it to 30 or removing that all, because that's an industry standard anymore, but 10 is definitely not anything that anybody's doing. Another question I had was talking about where there's going to be a background check done to look to...or you're talking about different convictions and things. Are we specifying who is responsible for obtaining and paying for a background check?
So I can talk to, yeah, Lieutenant Burzby about...they have LEEDs, which is an in-house background system run by the state highway patrol. And that will designate, like, I think every state submits stuff to LEEDs.
I didn't know if...
But I'll ask Burzby.
Maybe if you want to get a BCI check at the sheriff's office, is it any better or worse?
Right, they can possibly have to, yes, go out to the BCI, FBI background check and bring that with them.
Okay. Kind of some clarification there. Onto the next page, I think letters G and letters I, both of those, I just made a note that, in a way, it's almost vague, like, on G, it says, "The applicant is a person who has a lengthy or diverse criminal record who, in the opinion of the police administrator, should not be..." We're giving one person an opinion rather than a clear cut. I kind of just think if we're going to say, you either did this or you didn't do this, but eh, I don't like you because I think your record doesn't look the best. It's not clearly defined, and I just questioned whether we want that where somebody's going to argue, well, I think it's fine, you let the last guy do it. And that same thing was on letter I. An unsafe driving record based on a consideration of applicant's driving record, it doesn't, you know, what makes it unsafe? And then on K, letter K on that, if they've had their license suspended from an administrative action, is that something we are...I'm kind of picking your brain on your thought process. You know, if somebody gets behind on their child support or think that's what the administrative action is, correct?
Yeah, also, like, OVIs come with an administrative license suspension.
Okay.
There are different forms of administrative.
I thought it was just something more like not...
Child support.
Something. To me, if you're having your child support, you probably still could be a really decent taxi driver.
The IRS can take your driver's license or your ability, but yeah.
So I didn't know if we wanted that in there or not, but if you think there's other offenses that wouldn't otherwise be outlined, then I can...
Yeah, and I'll look at that too, because the other...so maybe not precluding you from being a licensed driver, but if child support has taken your driver's license, then you're not going to qualify in the beginning anyways.
Okay.
If you don't have an active valid driver's license at this point.
Okay. Those were the only questions I had.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Sorry.
I can tell you.
You can come to the podium and give your name and address, and you're free to speak, sir.
Mike Astor, 130 Brentwood Street. And I'll make it brief and short, just from past knowledge and so on, Mr. Gurner and also Mr. Myers, your background check, you were mentioning, and from what I understood, talking about LEEDs and NCIC, so on like that, you'll, I think, want to research that a little more. I'm not sure you can use LEEDs and NCIC for what you're talking about. That may be something that you will need to address specifically, how it will be run and so on. One of the reasons the CCWs and so on are done under a specific rule. The LEEDs NCIC is pretty much restricted to law enforcement, and for any purpose outside of that, unless you make sure it meets their criteria, can cause the law enforcement agency dire problems.
Great.
Just wanted to mention, because I think you're going to want to research it a little more.
I was looking at it through the old adage of let it be somebody else's problem, you know? Instead of us pulling it up here, and somebody wanted to argue with any findings, let them go and pay and get it done through the BCI. So... Okay. So, Mike...hi, go ahead.
Question. Jenny Vermillion, 515 Hill Street. Will there be taxi companies that are grandfather, or is this something that they're going to have to do upon renewal of getting...or is this only for new taxi drivers?
So currently, every taxi company has to register every year.
Every year, okay.
And so this just adds further stipulations, and not only do they have to register their vehicles, but register their drivers as well. And Lieutenant Burzby has sort of a working knowledge, and it's in their taxi companies that base...principal place of business is in Bussaras, which I understand that that's superfluous language and seemingly difficult, but somebody was talking about the yellow taxi that comes down from Tiffin every once in a while. They're not going to register, but the, you know, main ones that we see throughout the community.
Is there anything in the legislation...I don't have a copy of it to see, that addresses the safety and drivability of the vehicle?
Yes, so Lieutenant Burzby gave me a copy of the checklist that they use. I discussed with him other options and, you know, they put them through an inspection every year, and I know appearance. There is one town that your car had to be within the last 15 years, so right now, it would have had to have been purchased a 2008 variety or newer, and that's something that I've bounced off of him, and he's thinking about.
Okay.
Well, and to that point, some of the insurance companies, when you're looking for a commercial policy, will not insure a vehicle older than, I think, eight years for taxi cab use, so...
Makes sense.
I like that we're not including the checklist as part of the piece, because that allows them to make changes as they see fit. I think it should be a lot more strict than what it is now, based on what we've seen. Mr. Young, anything from you?
I'm trying to find it, but is there any place in here where we're telling them where to put stickers, you know, when they get their...when they get the authorization and they got their...I thought we talked about putting it in the back window or...
In there, they have to have the name of the taxi business displayed conspicuously on the outside of their car. Their registration or license has to be displayed on the inside, and then you guys also discussed having the fee schedule or fares posted on the inside as well.
So that's going to be left up to them as far as size and whatever they want to do? They can do whatever?
On the outside of the vehicle.
On the outside of the vehicle.
The inside, that's something that the city actually issues, like their registration.
Okay.
And I think...I'll have to talk to Lieutenant Burzby, but I think it's displayed in the front windshield on their dashboard, and then their fare schedule.
Yeah.
I don't think we have...we do not have any legislation or requirements for fare schedules right now.
Gotcha.
But I suppose you just slap that on the back of the seat, so when somebody gets in, they can actually see it.
Yeah, I know we did discuss that a little bit prior, I think, to what Mr. Young's alluding to, that, you know, if we're issuing a sticker, should it always be on the rear left or anything?
Yeah.
But like you said, the law enforcement's familiar with who they are, they're the ones issuing it, but yeah, I kind of remember that part in the conversation as well. Mr. Wireball?
No questions.
Mr. McKeever?
No, looks pretty good if we get these questions brought up.
Do we want to request legislation tonight with the changes we've discussed, or do we want to see another copy of this in two weeks and then send it on? I'll leave that to you three.
What the question is, so if we do get the...if we just request it and we pass it at the next council meeting?
It's not an emergency, so we've got three readings.
Right, but I mean, when will this take a...I mean, when are you going to enforce it onto the taxicabs?
I would say upon renewal.
Yeah, so we'd have to...
Or obtaining a new license.
Add something in there, so, you know, any new applicants or then everybody that's currently registered, give them a grace period so that their current registration continues.
To get their driver's registry.
Right, right. But I don't care either way.
I think we can wait till you get to the all...
I'm fine with that.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd rather wait till it's right.
So would I. Yeah. Yeah, if you would put that on our agenda for our next Health and Safety meeting, that would be great.
That looks good.
Yeah, thanks for your work on that.
No worries, it's only a year ago that we started.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
I knew it was the whole time, it was on my desk.
Yeah. Somewhere. Mr. Young, do you have any further open projects you wish to discuss?
Sure.
Mr. McKeever?
No.
Mr. Wireball?
No.
Any public participation for Health and Safety? Hearing none.
I think...
Oh, sir?
I think this was the committee that somebody had asked about furniture on the front porch.
Probably.
Seems like a Health and Safety question.
Yeah.
We don't have anything specifically prohibiting indoor furniture on your front porch or any real delineation between what is indoor and what is outdoor. The International Property Maintenance Code says, "All exterior property and premises shall be free from the accumulation of rubbish or garbage." It also says, "All exterior property and premises shall be maintained in a clean, safe, secure, and sanitary condition." So historically, Gordon has used those two codes to get rid of people that have thrown out furniture from inside and are just storing it on their front porch until they get around to taking it to the landfill or whatever the case may be. But if it actually looks in pretty decent shape and it's sitting on the front porch, we currently don't have anything that would prohibit that. And it's also kind of difficult to define what would be indoor as opposed to outdoor, but that's the state of the International Property Maintenance Code.
So what I'm hearing you say is if people have complaints, they can call them in, and Mr. Grove can go out and make an assessment, whether it violates that or not?
And we have cited people for like, you know, the couch that's torn apart, falling apart, stuff blowing in the wind, but there are other houses where we go out and somebody's got an older couch sitting on a covered porch, and it might not be my cup of tea, but it's appropriate.
All right. We'll adjourn at 6:25 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, March 9, 2023.
I might call Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:27 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and myself, Chair, Sierra and Sherrod. Do we have any public participation? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask if we have anybody who'd like to go for the approval of the minutes from February 23.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A first by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so next on the agenda is the City Property Uses.
So... It's not supposed to be there.
See, I'll start.
Did you have any...
We need to talk about it now, or open project?
Well, that's literally the next wording, so we've started it.
You guys have asked a bunch of questions about the Verizon-Selco partnership.
Your mic's on.
The...
That's why they don't work.
That's why we can't have next things. The initial lease was executed around January of 2010. The initial lease was for a five-year period, which pursuant to the contract shall automatically extend for five years, five additional five-year terms unless the lesssee, who would be Verizon, terminates it at the end of the then-current term. So in layman's terms, Verizon has the option to continue this lease until January of 2041. Each of the additional five-year terms includes a automatic 15% increase in rent. There's also a contemplated 30 years that would attach onto the back of those. So in 2041, theoretically, Verizon could continue for another 30 years, but at that point, the city would also have the ability to terminate the lease during the back end of those next 30 years. So the portion that I talked about, about the restrictions on the land and such as...so the lessor, which would be us, agrees that any other tenants of the property who currently have run through the future would take possession of the property, would be permitted to install only equipment that is of the type and frequency, which would not cause harmful interference, measurable in accordance with the then-existing industry standards to the then-existing equipment of the lesssee. The parties acknowledge that there would not be an adequate appropriate...adequate remedy at law for noncompliance, and we basically grant them specific performance or a injunction on that, which means if they sued us, we could...we would be forced to accommodate them if they could prove the harmful interference. If we ever intended to sell or otherwise transfer the property, whether separately or as part of a larger tract, we would first have to grant...or if we granted a third party an easement, or granted a third party a lease to any portion of that property, we would have to first offer that same opportunity to Verizon, and they would have the right to meet that bona fide offer, or they could reject that offer, and then we could proceed with the third-party purchase or lesssee, however that came about. And then Kevin asked about whether a community investment corporation, could the city lease that property to the community investment corporation, and then the community investment corporation subleases it out to a third party rather than transferring it? And the answer would be yes, you could do that. That's all I got.
Anybody else have anything on that?
What's your recommendation?
So currently, the original lease was for $12,000 a year, signed in 2010. We're making approximately $12,000, $13,000, something thousand, or, yeah, $12,000 or $13,000. Don't quote me. We make about $1,200, $1,300 a month, and they wanted an additional ability to basically amend the lease, is what we were attempting to do, which then created issues with Mr. Fankhauser, and that's still pending in court, so we'll figure all of that out. But one way that we could accommodate the restrictions that Verizon has, as well as... But one way that we could accommodate the restrictions that Verizon has, as well as rent additional space and incur additional $1,000 a month in rental income, would be by allowing the CIC to manage it. I mean, I think that we're sort of handcuffed with the 30, I mean, we're stuck with them till 2041, and anything that we want to do with them, with that property, we have to run it through them first. And so if they're willing to pay another $1,000 a month for, I think, I can't remember, I'll have to look at the map, but I thought it was 16 feet, you know, they would move the fence that's currently there, 16 feet. And if you look at the outdoor space there, and prior to doing any of this, Jeff Wagner and myself talked with the police department, because that's sort of their impound lot, and they don't ever fill the impound lot up. I mean, there's bikes in the front half and a couple cars in the back half, but other than that. So I don't know, I think it's an opportunity, I think it's something that you would have to consider, but I only give legal advice.
Do we know approximately how long till the lawsuit you mentioned might be resolved?
I think it's set in April to be finalized. This week, there was some pleadings filed by, there's a joint motion by Verizon, as well as the city Besires, asking the court to dismiss it on some different procedural and statutory limitations grounds.
Is Verizon in a big hurry at this moment?
No, they'd just like to know what we're doing.
I'd like the recommender to suggest or ask if we can wait and hear the outcome of the court case then.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Do you?
All right, so technically, legally, we're supposed to put things up to bid. I mean, if we don't do the CIC route, we're supposed to put things out to bid, correct?
Right.
Okay. So why would we not have just decided to put it out to bid with the stipulations of the current leaseholder that has to, you know, because if it's that close to their tower, it still has to fit within that? Why would we not have stipulations like that on a bid?
Moving forward, or why didn't we originally?
Yes, both.
So in 2000...
Because if we just move it to the CIC, it looks like we're doing something shady, whereas we know what has to be done.
Right, and so I would say communities use CIC ownership legally all the time for, you know, economic development, infrastructure, other things to that effect, and so that would be one avenue. We're also, in 2012, 10, 12, 10, whenever this was created, I don't know why or how it didn't go through the bid process, but the statute of limitations would have run on that, so I don't, and I think that the reason that Verizon negotiated this lease with the, you know, it was Dan Ross and Sid Severs originally negotiating with Verizon, because they're not going to invest significant amounts of money if in five years, a city could then change their mind on them. And so that's why you have a repeating lease that they basically control for 40 years or 30 years. Does that answer your question?
Not fully, but that's okay.
What was the rest of your question?
Just, why would we not fix it by saying, okay, these are the stipulations in our lease, we already have a lease, we went into this agreement, but when we're adding to it or amending it, like, they want to change it again, they wanted, we put up those parameters and we say, okay, to go with the current lease that we have, because that's there, so any bidding process would have to go around those stipulations.
Right, so you're basically saying we could put it out to bid...
With the stipulation.
Subject to Verizon can do, I mean, I think that...
I mean, Verizon would have to test to make sure it was going to go with their stuff anyway, you know, if somebody else added in.
Right.
So, because that goes with the current lease, so really, it's just having options so people understand what's going on.
Right, and so I think that, and I don't know, but I think the issue, there would be a majority of wireless communication companies aren't going to go through the hassle of submitting bids, researching the project, if there's a chance that Verizon can just say, no, we'll take that price.
But we already have an existing lease, in what you're saying, like, saying if I'm renting you a house, I'm going to make you sign an additional lease to use another bedroom? Is that what you're trying to get at? I'm confused by your question now.
Well, it's more than another bedroom, it's a whole new piece of land that we're adding to it.
16 feet.
It's bigger than me.
Well, okay.
I mean, like, literally, if I lay on the ground twice, I mean, I take up a bedroom. That's bigger than any of the bedrooms I have.
Right, but then...
So it really is, I mean, I've seen houses smaller than that.
Right, and so the original lease talks about the parent property, which is the entire thing, and then the, their current used property, which is the back. So the original lease contemplated and left it open for expansion, because the description in the original lease was the entire fenced-in area, but not the building. The green building is this parcel, but the open area was all that, they surveyed the entire thing, called that the parent parcel, and then rented the back portion. But basically, the parent parcel was included in the lease with an option to expand.
Oh, so there was an option already in there?
That's, yes, I mean, I'll reread it, but I think that's, that's what was...
Can I get a copy of that lease, like, second, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in the meantime, we're just going to kind of wait until we see what happens in April, correct? I mean, does that, does anybody else have a problem with that? Mr. Fankhauser?
Yeah, I've got something I want to bring up. So who cares who uses the extra 16 feet if the whole purpose of it is to generate revenue for the city? Why not put it out for bid? And if Verizon wants it, they'll bid on it. If somebody else wants to bid on it and pay more, they'll bid on it, which will then make more money for the city. So why are you trying to avoid putting it out to bid in a situation where you may end up generating more revenue anyway?
Right.
I mean, it's almost like you're intentionally trying to specifically help Verizon, like, there's some sort of backdoor deal going on here or something. I mean, why, shouldn't your best interest be to generate the most revenue for the city of Besires excluded of who the actual tenant is?
Right, so, but you're...
And then further that, okay, go ahead and answer that.
Sure, you want to maximize the ability to generate revenue, but based upon the limitations that we have, one of the best, most lucrative options would be to continue with the Verizon lease. I mean, that's why we bring it up, that's why the council talks about it. I just know that renting that out to anybody else is going to be very difficult based upon what we have with Verizon. And Verizon is going to come in and argue that the original 2010 lease, they basically leased the whole thing, but only paid us for the back portion until they needed more. That's the discussions that I've had with...
So are you saying that the, what do you call that, where they put something on the deed to the property, a deed restriction or something, they've already got something on that deed to the property that prohibits other portions of that property from being leased out to not them? Is that what you're saying?
They don't have a prohibition, but they have the ability to make it very difficult. So if you wanted to rent anything else out, you could go through all of this, get whatever...
So you didn't even rent the BNT building out?
Yes, that's not on the property, that's the green building.
It's two separate parcels?
It absolutely, it's two separate parcels, yeah.
Okay, so then that brings up the next thing I was going to say. So I have a lease for some city towers that is not near as good as this Verizon lease. My lease is like, it can be canceled with a six-month notice at any time. So why don't I get to have a five-year auto-renewing lease like Verizon does? Why don't I?
Well, I didn't negotiate that contract, but I would have to, I mean, you were negotiating with the city at that point, correct?
I was, and at the point in time, the administration come up with, that was the best thing, Dan was the Public Lands and Building Chair at the time, and he said, well, we're going to get you, you know, we'll get you something that's better than what you got now, and then it'd be worse than what I had before. Six months, it's six months, why would anybody invest in something that could, within six months, it could be all taken down?
Right, and so I think also the difference was that you wanted to put your equipment on Besires' towers, Verizon put their own tower up. I assume that's one of the differences, but in 2010, I wasn't with the city, I don't know when your lease was, but that was before I was ever here.
Yeah, that was Rob Ratliff, and he was saying at the time, everything's got to be put out to bid. That's what he kept saying, everything's got to be put out to bid. And now it sounds like nothing has to be put out to bid, from what you're saying.
Well, that's not accurate, no, that's absolutely not what I'm saying.
If we could just finagle things through a CIC, you know?
Absolutely not what I'm saying.
We could sublease the police tower and the water tower roof space to the CIC, and then we can get around everything, it sounds like.
Just to clarify, I'm not in favor of the CIC. That reason that question was asked was, the administration had asked about selling it to the CIC, and I asked if it came to that route, could we lease it? Because I don't want to sell any city property, so that's to clarify my point, I was not suggesting we use the CIC for said purpose. I was trying to avoid selling the property.
Yeah, I guess the moral of the story here is, is if Verizon gets better deals than me, is what, basically, you know?
I understand that you feel that way.
Out-town business, in-town business, you know?
Mike Asper, 130 Grand West Creek. I know this is drug out a little bit, and looking at your faces, you'd like this brought to an end, so I'll make it quick. Sitting back and as an outside party watching, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions here and some more review needs to be done. You already talked about waiting till April to look at this further, make a decision. Mr. Gerner, you brought up that there may be an option already in this lease where they could take over the property. I'm just bringing those two up as a quick one. As an outside citizen, I really think you're thinking of delaying this to April and putting a lot of research into it and seeing exactly where you're standing on this bridge and what avenue you have available coming up. That's all I have, just as an outside party kind of listening to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Asper. All right, so we're waiting on this till April, does anybody else have to add anything to this? Wait, one more.
No, no, no.
Okay. You're all right. All right, so now we're going to move on to the West Creek Conservatory presentation.
Well, the gentleman hasn't, I put his name specifically there, so...
Yeah, Mr. Joe Leslie.
He has not gotten back to me, so I guess we'll have to...
So we're just going to have to wait and see if he'll contact us again?
Aaron?
Yeah?
Did you guys make a motion to table this bill April or something? Or... I don't know.
We're just keeping it in open projects.
As an open project?
Yep.
Okay, I just wasn't too sure exactly what we're using.
Yeah, it's an open project, and we'll just put it back on the agenda in April.
Very good.
And it sounds like we're going to be holding off on the Old Pines conversation for now as well.
Do you want that put on the agenda for the next round?
Um, I said, let's see if he contacts you, yeah.
It could stand on as an open project until...
Yeah, it's just an open project, so...
Or until Ray Thodoff has any further information for us, or...
We can put it on the agenda when somebody contacts us and says they have another. In the meantime, do we have any more public participation? Oh, seeing none, I am going to adjourn Public Lands and Buildings at 6:46 PM. Planning Committee, March 9th, 2023.
I'll call Planning to order at 6:47 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chairs. Is there any public participation? Okay, there's none at this moment. Approval of minutes from February 23rd.
I'll move to approve this presentation.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Oh, sorry, those opposed? Okay, before me, I have the, we heard it Tuesday, from the Planning Commission. Here's, I'll read it again. Besires City Council, to Besires Council President, the Besires City Planning Commission met on Monday, February 27th, 2023, and voted in favor of the proposed addition of Section 1187.07 entitled Portable Shipping Containers, Comma Storage Containers and Similar Objects. The proposed legislation that was approved by the Besires Planning Commission is enclosed. Please note that the version is revised, is a revised version of proposed ordinance 07-2023 that had a first reading on February 7th, 2023. I request that a public hearing be scheduled and held in accordance with Chapter 1145 of the Besires Zoning Code. Sincerely, Greg Travis, Besires Planning Commission Secretary. So...
We have to give a 30-day notice, correct?
We have to give a 30-day notice.
First, you have to accept the Planning Commission's letter.
Right, I'm just...
And then John Rostash gave me, he'd like the public hearing Wednesday, April 19th.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to accept the...
If it's not, if it's not...
I guess my question then, why are we coming in here for another meeting when we could do it prior to a council meeting on the 18th or after, before the committee meetings on the 20th is my only question, but...
Because of the 30-day's notice.
Okay, well...
For the public hearing.
We have to have it, a minimum of 30-day notice, we don't have to have it on the 30th day.
I'm saying we can do it on Tuesday, the 18th, an hour before the council meeting. That's my, that's my favorite.
That's usually how we do it.
Tuesday, at 6 o'clock?
So I need a motion to accept this letter.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Which day would you guys want to have that, the 18th or the 20th?
We could do either or, we could do it on the 20th and have it, you know, on the committee night, or we could do it on the 18th for the council meeting, I don't really...
Terry, what?
Don't matter to me.
Dan?
If you have it before the committee, it'll start at 5.
Yeah, that's the question.
So a regular meeting would start at 6.
I think Tuesday makes more sense at 6 o'clock on the 18th.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to have the request of the public hearing be Tuesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All right, I have a first from Kevin, a second Terry. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, same sign, motion passed unanimously. We will have it on, scheduled on the 18th at 6:00 PM, council chambers. Okay, all right. Do we have any open projects that you would like to discuss? Is there any public participation? Okay, none seen. I will adjourn plating at 6:52 PM.
Economic Development Committee, March 9th, 2023.
All right, I'll call Economic Development to order at 6:53 PM with members present, Ciaran Sherrick, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First up is public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the February 23rd, 2023 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, we got a first from Sharon, or Aaron, Sharon, a second from Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those pass. All right, those pass. Any open projects you guys would like to discuss tonight?
No.
No? No? Okay. Any other public participation? All right, then we will adjourn Economic Development at 6:54.
Finance Committee, March 9th, 2023.
I'd like to call Finance Committee. Meeting to order at 6:56. Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair, all present. Yeah, we're all present. Any public participation at this point? Oh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a race. Use your, hit him with the game.
First come, first served. Mike Castor, 130 Brentwood Street. I'll keep this as brief as I can. For those of the council and the committees, you're all aware of what's going on. But so, I guess I'm addressing the committees, but it's mainly for our public participation that's watching from outside. A question was brought up and commented Tuesday night during the council meeting, you might remember. A gentleman brought up about where the procedure is regarding the campaign, let's call it for nothing better, than for the fire and the public, or safety forces. I just wanted to make a open comment that there is a fund already open for that purpose, to try to raise money, to get the posters out, get advertisement out. For those of the participating public, if anybody wishes to donate to that, the title assigned to it is Citizens for a Safer Bussiris, and I'll repeat that, so that people can jot it down if they want. Citizens for a Safer Bussiris. Ladies and gentlemen, my comment was early on, what needed to be done to get this started. There is no restriction. Everybody says, well, they want a lot of money or so on. This committee that's being put together to do this will accept whatever our citizens can afford to do. If you can't afford to do anything, you're our neighbors and part of Bussiris. Whether it be $5, $10, if you're rich, send $200. As the auditor said the other night, we love your money, but we love the people more. You are the citizens, you've heard what's been going on with the fire department and with the police department. This levy is going to be on top of us before we know it. First week of May, we're looking at less than eight weeks, probably six, seven weeks. This is gonna be on the ballot, looking for your checkmark. So I wanted to make it clear to answer that gentleman's question from Tuesday night, and I think, my understanding is, the group that is handling this is, this is not open for a public meeting, is my understanding. They're going to be, start meeting to get things rolling forward. We should start seeing some signs show up in the near future. You will also see a listing for a P.O. box where these checks could be mailed to. But ladies and gentlemen, don't worry about P.O. boxes and stuff. I have yet to find anybody that, if you're willing to give them money, we can't find somebody to take it for you. So I would mention to the police chief, maybe they can arrange for you to drop it off at the police department to a dispatcher, or something to be forwarded to the proper, I believe his title probably would be treasurer of the account for this. But the reason I asked for the time tonight was to mention this, so those watching can start listening. You'll know where it's going, what's going on, and we are, as a group, as citizens of Bussiris, making all of us aware. Money is one thing. I'm going to tell people from my experience with the sheriff's office, dealing with accounting, money is great. Word of mouth is much better. Talk to your neighbors, talk to the people you work with. Find out what their attitude is. You're gonna be surprised to find out, most people are gonna want a fire truck available. They're gonna want an ambulance available. If they've got a problem with it, you should find out what it is and discuss it with them. But word of mouth is what we, as a citizens of Bussiris, need to do. We need to talk to each other. Explain to them what we need and why we need to do it. There is no doubt what has been discussed in the last few weeks, probably even longer, that the city is in a financial jam. There's no misunderstanding about that. The whole country's in a financial jam. But we do have infrastructure. We have things that we must maintain to protect ourselves. So I will stop with that, but you now know that there is a procedure in place. They are moving forward, and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, you're gonna be hearing quite a bit about it. Thank you.
Kurt Bankhauser, 616 Prospect. The pool, when those repairs were made to the cracked pool several years back, there was a bond taken out. If I remember correctly, that bond was, I think, for three years, and possibly had like a $100,000 a year bond repayment. Do you know if that bond has been fully paid off, or are we still making a payment on that this year?
We brought it up, if I could, yeah. We brought it up in the budget meetings, and I think it was said that it was paid off last year, was the third year. Yeah.
Okay, that was gonna be a suggestion I had, is if that was in the budget this year, that was gonna free up money next year, which could potentially keep the pool open.
Stay tuned.
The other thing, this, is it the Kiwanis that's doing this splash pad, or Rotary?
Kiwanis.
Kiwanis. Now, are you a member of Kiwanis, Mr. McKeever?
I'm just a member. I'm not on the board or anything.
Okay, I don't know how that works with the ethics laws and that, but I don't know, maybe you might not be allowed to vote on something that gives money to a private organization that you're a member of. That's just something I thought of. I mean, that'd be no different than, you know, a for-profit organization, even though it's still a nonprofit one. Just maybe think about that.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. There are four topics on your agenda tonight. Well, there's more than four, but there are four topics that I am wishing to speak to. And rather than talking about all of them during this public participation, or waiting until the end under public participation, I'm asking Mr. Wireball if I have your permission to talk about the topic when the committee is talking about the topic.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
Good for now? Okay, first up's the Northwest Trunk Sewer. I think Dylan.
Do you want to do the minutes?
Oh, well, I had it crossed out, because we can't do it. We can't do the minutes because there's a problem, right? So.
Correct, I gotta make an amendment.
The minutes are gonna be corrected, so we're just skipping that one, so I guess.
I'll do them for the next.
Yeah, we'll do them both next time, so, sorry. No, that's all right. I crossed out, so I just skipped right over and did same. I didn't wanna like, anyway. Northwest Trunk Sewer, Dylan, is there anything we need to add to that? You know, the money's in the budget, it's in the sewer budget, so it doesn't affect. Or storm sewer, storm water, yeah. So it's in the storm water, so it doesn't affect, you know, manning at the fire station, or police, or anything like that. It's entirely different. Coming from entirely different place, just so everyone knows, when we say we want to spend $851,000. So, anything, so we want to put that out for bid, right? Yeah, that's what, that's what we're asking, to put that out to bid. So if I have a motion to put that? Okay.
With a not to exceed number of?
10%.
Was the 851, including the 10%, Jeff?
So not to exceed the, a dollar amount of $871,057.39.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Local Board of Tax Review, I guess, is this, is this the one you had to speak on, I'm assuming?
I was just wondering what you were doing tonight with it, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're doing with it either. We're just trying to get it back on.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. If you'll remember, at the October 4th, 2020, well, wait a minute. At the March 7th, 23 council meeting, I reported out that at the October 4th, 2022 council meeting, former Auditor Schiffer referred to the Finance Committee, and I quote, "The need for an income tax board of appeals consisting of two members appointed by council, and one member appointed by the administration." Throughout various council and committee meeting discussions, Schiffer repeatedly referred to the Income Tax Board of Appeals. In my research, I have found that per Bussiris Codified Ordinance, Section 189.18, the legislative authority of the municipality shall maintain a local board of tax review. It is this board that hears the appeals. And this is provided in Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 718. The local board of tax review, which we again currently have, is a three-member board. Two members are appointed by council, one member appointed by the top administrative official of the municipality, which in this case would be the mayor. The two appointed by council serve for two years. The one appointed by the mayor serves at the discretion of the administrative official, or at the discretion of the mayor. Since we already have a local board of tax review, which again is responsible for hearing appeals, the referral for the need of an income tax board of appeals was done in air. I discussed this matter today with former Auditor Schiffer, and she agrees. So it's my opinion that what council needs to do is, council needs to refer to the Finance Committee the matter of appointing two members to the local board of tax review for two-year terms. So it's next, well, the next council meeting, there needs to be this referral done.
Who did we refer them to before?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Well, before, you referred it to the Finance Committee meeting, or to the Finance Committee. As I indicated, last Tuesday, finance met on October 6th, November 2nd, December 8th, and discussed, but nothing was done. Then, at the February 21st council meeting, the local board of tax review was referred to the Economic Development Committee. That committee met and requested legislation approving the appointments of three named individuals. And as I pointed out, at no time was there discussion of the two-year term. So first off, back on October 6th, when there was a lot of discussion going on about the Income Tax Board of Appeals, the question came up, well, what committee should it be in? Councilman Myers had indicated that he thought it should be Economic Development Committee, because as he stated, quote, "All of our other things that exist that we put people on is done through the Economic Development Committee." Schiffer thought it should be Finance, because income tax is under Finance, or deals, financials. Law Director Gurnert, or interim Law Director Gurnert stated, "I would keep it in Finance," and it just ended there. So that having been done in October 6th, I'm not quite sure why in February of this year it was referred to the Economic Development Committee. But again, I believe we have to start over. There needs to be a referral to the Finance Committee of the appointment of two individuals to the local board of tax review for two-year terms. Thank you.
They're on the list. Next council meeting.
Well, so I guess my only point would be yes, I agree. So it was, the tax issue, and what we're trying to do is appoint people into this tax, local board of tax review, or?
No, it is not. Yes, excuse me, excuse me, yes, it's the local board of tax review, I apologize.
No worries. Right, so we're trying to point people into the local board of tax review, which handles appeals, that people appeal their tax liability questions. Right, so that was referred to Economic Development.
Right.
And then Economic Development created legislation, which you came and spoke on on Tuesday, and we put it as council as a whole, so that we could change the things, so that they would come from council as a whole, because it probably shouldn't come out of Economic Development, even though if you look at the list, tax is in both Economic Development and Finance Committees. So it's sort of ambiguous, but anyways.
Remember, you were the one that stated it should stay with Finance.
I think that it should come out of Finance, but in your council rules or ordinances, it's both, but it doesn't matter. My point being, so then, we polled this, right? We prepared it, we had our two members, because the members get two-year terms, and you indicated that we shouldn't pass this as a council as a whole, because it was a violation of, we're overusing, we're overusing the emergency procedures, the rule, suspending the rules.
And you are.
Yes, correct, you said that. So then, what happened, that meeting was, council then referred that, that piece and that question over here to Finance Committee. So then, that piece and that question on the local board of income tax review is now in Finance Committee. So if my logic serves me correct, it's been kicked around a few times, but we're currently in Finance Committee, and it went from Economic Development to the open floor, then got referred, because we polled it, into our beautiful Finance Committee.
I'm getting dizzy.
I'm not really. I mean, it's all logically tracking. It's not perfect, but it logically tracks.
So you're saying we can do it tonight because it was all referred by council as a whole?
Well, it was referred, it's in Finance right now, and it was referred on Tuesday night in the referrals.
That's what I'm saying.
And you are correct, because I believe Aaron, you did that.
She did.
You referred, so what you're saying is that because it was referred Tuesday to Finance, then Finance can discuss that tonight? And is that what you were planning on doing, Dan?
Yeah.
I think you guys, when I ask you, you were like a little, oh, I'm not sure what we're doing.
Yeah, and so what they would do is ask for legislation, either as an emergency or not as emergency, up to you guys, appointing Lisa Whitehead and Mr. Shuttler as, to two-year terms, because you guys have to appoint somebody to two-year terms, and you can't appoint Joyce, because she's been previously employed in the city within the past five years, so she can't be the legislative authority's appointment.
Correct, she will be appointed by the mayor.
She will have to be appointed by the mayor, yeah.
Right, and he will do that just by letter?
Yeah.
Or report?
Right.
At a council meeting?
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm just hoping everybody understands, because this has been, in my opinion, a mess. So, okay.
Thank you.
Being said, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I got right here. I'll make a motion as an emergency to appoint, from council, Lisa Whitehead, 1135 Fremont Street, and Larry Shuttler of 357 West Southern Avenue, to the board, the local board of tax review.
Do I have a second?
Four to your turn.
I'll second that.
Well, yes, a two-year term.
We have a first and a second. Did you get who did it?
Who's first?
I don't know. I wasn't paying, I wasn't paying attention. I think I dove off, but.
Mark's first, then Kevin?
Yes.
That'll work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, and there's the legislation for that. Looked a lot like what we saw Tuesday, so. All right, we've got that, then, now we're on to the splash pad. Ordinance 152023. What was the problem with that?
That came out of council as a whole as well, because the number that we had originally talked about with Kaylee was. talked about with Kaylee was different, the numbers that she provided, the ninety thousand was the same, but the numbers that she provided were different. But then, upon further review, it's already been appropriated, it just needs, so if council were going to move forward, what we would really need was a authorization to allow the city auditor to prepare the appropriate warrant or warrants, so that the, you know, basically, so that they could transfer funds over to the Kiwanis Club for the completion of the splash pad. And then there's, obviously, you guys know a note that was prepared requiring Kiwanis to reimburse those funds. But we, previously, we were transferring or appropriating and then, but it's already been appropriated, we just needed, if the council were so inclined to do so, would need to authorize the auditor to spend that money.
These are some questions that I have for you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
The promissory note that you refer to. I've read over the note. Is there a reason you're identifying it as note rather than promissory note, as you refer, have been referring to it as?
No.
Okay. Personally, I feel it should say promissory note, but that's my personal opinion. On the note, in looking at it, you have both the Bussaras Kiwanis signing, that would be whoever's authorized to sign, as well as the City of Bussaras. Just for a matter of information, during the thirty-three-plus years that I worked for Attorney Robert Clark Neff, Sr., he always impressed upon me that the lender never signs the promissory note. That is only the borrower that signs the promissory note. And that's only because one time I had a lender sign the promissory note, and I was called on the carpet with, oh, no, because Mr. Neff informed me that that individual then is obligating themselves to payment. So I mean, I've, that's always stuck in my mind, that there is no signing by the borrower. And I did some checking, or the lender, excuse me, the lender. So I guess I'm questioning why you're having the city sign the note, because the note is just talking about the terms of, you know, when you're going to pay it back, you know, default, late charges, what have you. So that's a question, why the city is being put on there to sign as well. Then, does Kiwanis have bylaws or a document that sets forth who is authorized to sign notes?
So they have spoken about this, these issues at their Board of Directors meetings, and obviously, their Board of Directors would vote to authorize the president to sign on their behalf. I do not have a copy of their bylaws or organizational structure, but, you know, I guess that's, that's how they have been operating, under, the Board of Directors would have to approve and agree to, you know, put their, put their signature on there.
I know that we have a surety bond. It says the borrower, borrower shall secure a security bond sufficient to cover the obligation. And I mean, even though that's in there, that doesn't concern you on loaning money? A promissory note is considered, and I've done researching on that, is that's done more if you're loaning money among family, small loans. I mean, having worked in the legal field, when we did a promissory note, that note accompanied a contract. In other words, there was a contract drawn up between the two parties, and the contract said, okay, here are the terms, you're going to pay this, out of this, out of that. Then, along with that contract, there was then the promissory note, then that was signed by the borrower of the funds. I guess I'm, I'm just really having some issue with loaning ninety thousand dollars, and I have absolutely nothing against the Kiwanis. I mean, Mr. Neff himself was a loyal, loyal Kiwanian, he was proud of that. And I'll just give you a little tidbit, when it came Thursday, we could be sitting in a meeting with a client, and about ten till twelve, he'd look at me and say, okay, Vicki, continue on, I'm headed to Kiwanis. I mean, that's just how devoted he was, but, you know, that's just a little tidbit information. I'm, I, I just personally have an issue with this loaning of the money. Again, you know, that's... And I'm reading the newspaper article that appeared back in January twenty-second, twenty-two, and that was when we had, well, one of our former council members, Doug Folk, came and spoke to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. And at that time, he said, you know, the club began raising money for the splash pad project with a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar goal. While that goal has not been met, the club has raised almost one-hundred thousand dollars. This is something that we fully believe we could pay for in full by the end of twenty-twenty-three, and we would like to do that. My question is, a year, over a year, has come and gone since they've had a hundred thousand. What kind of money have they raised in that period of time?
Yeah, and so I don't know currently what their bank account balance is, but I know that they've approached Timken, they've approached the foundation, and this all may be off or not, they may have that money within a week, two weeks, according to some of the people that I have talked to. To your promissory note, so when you borrow money, I think you're getting caught up on language, but when you borrow money, you sign a note, you sign a promissory note which is secured by a mortgage deed.
Right.
It's, it's a note.
But that's something different.
A note is a promise to pay.
Right.
That's why it's called a promissory note, a promise to pay. You go to the bank, you sign a promissory note and a mortgage deed. That, it's, a note is a note, it's the same thing, it's a promise to pay. And the reason the city would sign it, it's a mutual obligation, right? So we're not binding ourselves to pay back the promissory note, we're acknowledging that, that we are entering into this note, and we are the lender for all purposes. We're lending in ninety thousand dollars on, in return for their promise to pay us ninety thousand dollars over the next three years. That would be the reasoning behind why we would do it that way. But a promissory note is nothing more than a guarantee to pay, and the surety bond would be purchased on behalf of the Kiwanis, so that if the money did not make it into the project as required, the insurance company would pay, reimburse the city, and then Kiwanis would have a problem with whoever the insurance company was for fraud, misappropriation, or whatever the case may be.
So back to your comment that you have heard that possibly they could have the money in a week or a couple of weeks?
I think they're hopeful that some of the people that they have reached out to, they will know within the month of, month of March.
So then, why are we, why don't we hold this and wait and see what happens in a month or two?
Right, so I think that the initial idea was that the builder that Kiwanis wants to use needs a yes or no, and a commitment from somebody, or we don't get on the list and it doesn't get built this summer, which is why we were trying to front money to the Kiwanis with a promise to pay back, and then if they got the money from the foundation, or Timken Foundation, or private donors, they would reimburse us. But, I mean, I'm not, I've only been on the paper end of this, I don't have anybody speaking to those, I mean, Mr. Kennedy's not here, the mayor's not here, but that's my understanding of why the timing is what it is.
I think we should wait. Again, that's just my opinion. At the February twenty-third finance meeting, there was a motion, and I quote, "For the promissory note loan to the Kiwanis for the splash pad," and this motion was approved. I'm assuming... Yeah, because, Brian, you had asked, I'm just looking here at the transcript, you had asked for a motion as an emergency. Oh, no, that was... Oh, yeah, you had asked authorizing the mayor or the service safety director to enter into that promissory note, you would ask for a motion. There's nothing been said on entering into this promissory note, is that what we're talking about here tonight? Is that piece of legislation? Okay. So is...
To my understanding, Vicki, it's just really redoing what we already did because the numbers were wrong.
Well, and I, I, okay, the, the numbers...
The numbers that the auditor presented, the, the total number of ninety thousand dollars hasn't changed, but the other numbers in there were incorrect.
But I, I will have to say this, because I got a copy of what she gave to you folks. The only number that was incorrect was the total general fund. Everything else was correct, and it was those numbers that appeared in the legislation. So the incorrect number of total general fund, which never appears in an appropriation piece of legislation, didn't appear in that legislation. But the legislation itself, then I've come to find out, wasn't even a good piece of legislation, because it was asking for money to be appropriated from unappropriated general funds to this fund, and here, you're going to a total separate fund, you're going to this two-seven-one or whatever?
No, I spoke with the auditor today, and that was my understanding, too, that is not correct, it was coming from the general fund, and she reiterated that to me today.
That must have been, because I talked with her this morning, and she told me...
I was there at two-thirty PM today.
Oh, I was there this morning about eleven, eleven-thirty.
And she did speak with Joyce to clarify everything, so, yes.
Because Joyce was even in on that meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And agreed that that was all wrong.
Yeah.
But now you're telling me, now they're saying it's right.
I've got my notes here, yep, she said that money was actually coming from the general fund, and not from Fund two-seventy-one.
And can you understand?
Why I voted no?
Why once confused, yes?
Yep.
I mean, this is scary. Okay, thank you.
She's got it, go ahead.
Okay, I have nothing against the Kiwanis, I think they are, they do great things, but I don't think the city should be getting in a business of giving loans to the private organizations, because one, once you do it for one, what, what's to stop a couple more from coming, oh, let's, we want a loan too, you give one to one, you know, can, can we get a loan? Is there any advantage that this...
I'll give, tell you the advantage, the advantage is, if we let the Kiwanis handle this, head this up, we eliminate the bidding process, and we don't have to put it out for bid, we don't have to do all that, is that right? Right.
Right.
So we can get it done, and we can get this done, hopefully, early enough that the kids can use it this year, you know? And every time we bring this stuff back, we bring it back, we bring it back, we're just pushing it back, and I don't know what we're arguing about, because it's, I want to get it done.
I think it was able to have been voted on Tuesday night.
Yeah, so, go ahead, I'm sorry if I interrupted you, but...
What's, what's to stop them from just getting donations within their own organization here over the next twelve months, and then them getting the money they need to do it, and then doing it next year? I mean, and then we can use the money we were going to loan them, and then open the pool this year. Is that a possibility? I mean, is there something that the, the splash pad needs to be opened this summer for that I'm not seeing here? That it can't go by one more year, it has, you know?
A great photo opportunity.
A photo opportunity before somebody ends their, their term as mayor, because next year they won't be there.
I don't know, but let's not go there, so.
Sorry, I digress.
Yes. All right.
We'll make a short, try to, Mike Castor, one thirty Brentwood Street. Don't play devil's advocate. I've met Vicki many times, not an advocate of hers, in fact, I wish I had her on my team when I was still employed, her accuracy is astounding. But I, I had some hesitations on the ninety thousand dollars, but I have to put the trust, as I just talked about the tax issue for our citizen. We have a council that we voted in, each of us have our different districts. We have to put our trust in the council. If they feel, under the current money situation, that our city can handle ninety thousand dollars in a note to the Kiwanis, Kiwanis approached the city to put this in for the citizens, then let's get this done and get it over with. If the money's there, I completely agree with a promissory note. I grew up through my grandfather's rules and so on, I got my first car on song on promissory notes. It's back when the banks used to write them. You walked into the bank, pretty much a handshake and a signature, and you had five hundred or a thousand dollars, and you paid it off quickly. Mr. Gurnett has went to means to protect the city's ninety thousand dollars, so hopefully, everything will work smooth. But after considerations on, as I say, I'm putting my trust in our council members that we elected to represent us. If this is their decision, they reviewed it and think it can be done, let's do it and get it on its way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I, I guess...
Before you ask...
Okay, yeah.
May I? As it was brought up...
So, I don't... Right. My basic understanding, and it's been a minute, but you have no pecuniary gain in any transaction, it's not a business, it's not a, it would not be something that you would profit off of in any way, shape, or form. Obviously, we're all members of different organizations that may come in contact with the city, but for a actual one-hundred percent answer, I would have to go to the basement and be back. I can't give you one-hundred percent, this is approved or disapproved on the cuff. I know how I can find it, but it's going to take me ten minutes.
Well, we move on, let him go find that out, because I can't vote without being referred.
Well, what do we need to vote on? Do we have to vote on warrants, we haven't done that yet?
You would have to...
Is this legislation that we had the other night, or is that the...
No, so I'd have to change it, but you have to approve the auditor to issue a warrant or warrants in payment of the ninety thousand over to the Kiwanis for the completion of the splash pad, and approving the city to enter into a contractual agreement with Kiwanis for the repayment of the ninety thousand dollars. And then, skipping ahead, so you guys appropriated the money from the enterprise funds to reimburse the general funds on salaries, but we never did the appropriating or transferring it from the general fund, so all of those people that are paid twenty percent, twenty percent, that money has been appropriated out of the enterprise funds, but we didn't do the second part, which transfers it, because Joyce always just tells us what we need to do, and we forgot to do the second half, which is what the next item on your business is. While you guys discuss all that, I will be back. Can I read?
Okay, we're talking about warrants. There was no referral to committee about legislation for authorizing the auditor to prepare a warrant, so how are you discussing that tonight?
Two things, this is a regularly scheduled meeting, so it's not a sunshine law violation, and second...
I didn't say it was.
Good. Second, the council referred that legislation back to finance committee for further discussions. And so that's what's going on right now, further discussions to figure out how we would have to appropriately do this.
We referred ordinance 15-2023 back to committee, which that's the ordinance which I was told this morning was all wrong. But then you said that you were told this afternoon it's right. And ordinance 15-2023 had to do with appropriating funds. That is a total separate piece of legislation from a warrant. When you do a warrant, that is a piece of legislation that authorizes the auditor to issue a warrant to pay X number of dollars to whomever. So that warrant has nothing to do with ordinance 15-2023. Well, I won't say it doesn't have anything to do with it. It's, it's a splash pad issue, as was ordinance 15-2023. But they're two separate pieces of legislation.
It's my understanding in this instance that if the council approves the loan, then the auditor comes back to request the warrant to make the payment once. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
That's how it should have been done before, if I'm not mistaken.
That's, that's how I'm, so yeah, the warrants, we're jumping ahead. We're putting our cart before our horse.
But did not Mr. Gurnert state that?
We're trying to figure it all out, yeah.
Well, we just did that with the Northwest Sewer. Oh, no, we just put that out to bid. And, what's that? How did we word that? Put the Northwest Sewer out to bid.
Authorized to go out to bid.
Authorized to go.
Yeah, but in this instance, I think she's right. We don't ask for a warrant until that money's been approved to have been spent. I think tonight.
We proved to spend it in the budget, didn't we? I thought.
Wow.
See, you can't.
This is why I don't, this is why we're going through this. I mean, it was a budget item.
I do remember it being in the budget.
I thought so, too.
In fact, I don't, it probably, before that, before that, we approved it back in, after the mayor's State of the City address, and he said he wanted to do, use the money for these things, and that was one of them. And at that meeting, which was in January or probably February, maybe, I'd have to look, we said, yeah, let's do a splash pad. And they've already done some of the work, right?
Yeah. When I finished the ground work and the structures, the sewer and water line that was installed, my understanding was okayed last year to go out to bid on both.
Yeah, because we split it. We split it.
It's a phase one and a phase two.
So, right, so I think, oh, it's, I don't know. And the reason we're going, the reason we're shifting it over to Kiwanis is because then they can bypass the bidding process, and we can get it done quicker.
Yeah, you don't have to pay any wage upon a lot of the extra cost into it. Get more free money.
Yep.
If the private company does it. We're talking to the prevailing wage and everything else.
Right.
From that point, I don't think that this committee has any further work to do. I think we already, it already came out of this committee, and it should have been voted on Tuesday night. That shouldn't have been sent back. What should have ever been moved to council as a whole came out of the finance committee. But when the law director's office changed it to coming out of councils as a whole, that's why it got sent back. So it should have just been left alone.
It should have stayed as finance committee.
Correct. So my, my interpretation, we've already made that motion as a committee. I think it can just be voted on at the next council meeting, can it not? Or because it was sent back, do we have to vote on it again on committee? That's the only.
Yeah, I mean.
Just do it again anyway.
Well, request legislation through, from finance as this.
Which we already did.
Yeah, I guess we did. But then, yeah, he changed it to council.
But now, if my memory is correct, this $90,000 that committee spoke about on February 23rd, I believe was the date, that was never referred by council to committee.
Yeah, it, it got, it got brought up at some point, and it was a referral for the, for the promissory. That's when I made the, I remember the discussion where I brought up having an surety bond and everything. That was, that was referred during that night.
Yeah, that was referred back a little bit.
Yep.
Where they talked about.
He did it in one of his, his, in the law director's report, because that's when I questioned him at the end of his report about that, and it was a referral at that point.
There was a referral for an appropriation of $90,000.
You're saying there wasn't for the loan? Because that was where I questioned him on.
No, not, well, I mean, that's what the $90,000 is for, is for the loan. What I'm saying is, when the auditor gave her report on Feb., well, I guess it was February 21st, because that would have been the council meeting, February 23rd was your committee meeting, when she gave her auditor's report, the only thing she reported out was for the enterprise, she reported out appropriations for the enterprise fund reimbursement, as well as legislation for the reimbursement. There was no report out of an appropriation for the $90,000. That, however, was discussed in committee on the 23rd, and in my opinion, should not have been discussed because it was not referred out at the council meeting. Because you know, as Aaron had indicated at one time, and I've got the minutes, I don't know if I've got them with me here, but if it's not on the agenda, you don't discuss it.
But budget's an open project.
Excuse me?
Budget's an open project, though.
I was gonna say, the splash pad's been an open project, but I don't, it didn't come from Kaylee, it came from Brian.
Yeah.
It goes in his report. Changing it from being.
From it being our project to it being a Kiwanis project?
Yeah. From changing it from being our project to Kiwanis' project, so they can get a cheaper bid than we could.
Okay, so if I go back and I look at the council meeting minutes, you're saying I should find that there was a referral made to the finance committee?
That's how I recall it, but I could be wrong.
I was still in the last meeting or what was one report of that, if you want to.
But I do know it came from the law director.
Okay.
Because that's where I questioned him about the bond.
Yes, you did.
Okay. Then I'll go back and look at minutes and then also listen to.
Correct us if we're wrong, but yeah, that's how I remember it.
Okay, okay. The enterprise fund reimbursements that he mentioned as he walked out. I'm trying to remember how he made reference to them, but those enterprise fund reimbursements, those were placed in committee. The auditor reported out at the committee meeting, or at the council meeting on the 21st of February, that was put in finance. When you had your finance meeting on the 23rd, she also discussed that, as well as the appropriations for the $90,000, as well as the appropriations of the monies from the general funds, appropriations from unappropriated funds, unappropriated general funds into the various reimbursement items, because they were short. There wasn't enough money in them to pay the $83,000 that had to come out of each fund to go into the enterprise fund reimbursements. So the auditor did all of the proper reporting. But for whatever reason, when a motion was done, then on February 23rd, that was overlooked. The motion was just, okay, let's do appropriations for this and let's do appropriations for that. So I just want to understood that, you know, the auditor did do her job properly and discussed and had paperwork and everything. It was just, for whatever reason, overlooked, you know, by the committee.
Okay, so we, this, we appropriated it, we just need to transfer it now.
Yes.
So that's the item on the table.
There's no transfer. It's not a transfer. It is a reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursed a general fund from the enterprise funds.
And, you know, it's, and I know people think I'm a stickler, that's okay. This is what gets us into trouble, when we don't understand the verbiage, just like when the auditor is talking about the income tax, you know, appeals board. It's not an appeals board. It's a review board, and just one word can just change everything. And there is, there's appropriations, there's transfers, there's reimbursements. We just have to understand and.
Do I include last year's?
Uh huh.
Or what, this year?
That's why that 08-2022 is there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you want a motion?
Yes, I do, please.
I'll make a motion as an emergency to request legislation that reimburses the general fund from the various enterprise funds.
I'll have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes, so now we're, I guess we're back to the, we're back to Brian, if he's, was there a question? Was there a question about your legality here?
Right, so it talks about having interest in the profits or benefits of a public contract, have an interest in the profits or benefits of a contract that was not subject or did not go out for public bid. And so my point would be, you don't have an interest in any of that. There's no financial gain. It's not like a contract agreeing or voting on a contract would increase your stocks, bonds, portfolio. You're not authorizing the use of, your company, like you're not voting that we go out to bid, then your company's going to be awarded a bid, or you're not voting on a bid. I don't know. That would be my, my take on the 29, 21, 42 unlawful interest in public contracts.
So I believe, I believe what we discussed was that this ordinance 15, 20, 23 was okay as long as it came out of finance. Is that what we were saying?
I believe that's correct procedurally.
And then the next question is the warrant, or warrants, right?
Which the warrants aren't ready yet until said time council would approve that. Then she would come back to request a warrant, make the actual payment.
Is that right?
No, the money is ready.
The money's ready.
The money has been already appropriated in the budget. So what we would be asking would be for council to spend that money, agree to transfer the $90,000 out to the Kiwanis Club, subject to the promissory note.
Yeah, the monies did that last year. We're just.
I'm trying to think here. You're saying that the money is already appropriated for the $90,000? It's already in budget?
Yes, that is correct.
Then what is the appropriation that we're doing from unappropriated general funds? Look at 15 dash.
I don't know that we ever actually appropriated. When we had our budget meetings, it was discussed that they wanted to spend out on it, but I don't believe it was ever appropriated. I think that's where our confusion is.
Okay.
We talked about it, but we didn't, we didn't do that.
So, okay, I just want to make sure that, okay.
I think that's where we're all confused at. The, the project was discussed, but it was never actually appropriated.
We went out to, or we went out to bid on both phase one and phase two, right?
What's that?
We went out to bid on phase one and phase two, right?
Just on phase one. And we're, they're trying to avoid bidding on phase two.
We did go out to bid on phase two, but it came in, which higher than on.
It was higher.
Yeah, higher than what was agreed to.
That's why we want to go, right? So, I guess my only question is, can we prepare a warrant or warrants so that, or can we put the warrants out, I guess, for the, for the funding? Is that what we're asking for?
Yes.
No, I think we're asking to approve the promissory note, correct?
It's a two-step thing, right? So you're going to approve the auditor to write a check, issue a warrant, is.
Okay.
Write a check to Kiwanis and secure that payment to Kiwanis by this promissory note.
So one thing with two steps.
Yeah.
Got it.
You were downstairs, Brian, when I was discussing this with the committee, the warrant legislation. Okay, I'm, now I'm really getting confused. That was or was not referred to committee?
Yeah, so.
When was there a referral made to the finance committee that legislation be requested to authorize the auditor to pay $90,000 to the Kiwanis Club?
So the entire splash pad issue has been in committee, out of committee, back in committee. And so, at this point, if the, if they wanted to move forward on the splash pad project, what we would need to do is issue a warrant and secure it by the promissory note. So I don't know that anybody referred the splash pad project specifically only to discuss the warrant issue, because unfortunately, like you said, we talk about appropriations, we talk about transfers, we talk about warrants, we talk about this, that, and the other thing. And so what the council knows is, we want to bring this to committee, and at that point in committee, we'll know what we need to do in order to proceed or not proceed, either way. So, no, I don't think that there will ever be a referral that says we need to refer this directly to the committee so that they can issue a warrant. I mean, in a perfect role, I suppose, but the referral, we referred 15, 20, 23, the splash pad piece, back to council, or back to committee to discuss further, to fix whatever the issues were. And I think that one issue that you brought up was that it was coming from council as a whole, which I don't disagree that emergency legislation probably needs to be a true emergency. But then that, when council then referred it back to finance for a discussions in finance on the splash pad project, then that sort of notifies the auditor, as well as myself and the service safety director or whomever, to do investigation, to look into what's the issue and how do we have to, what do we need to do to move forward? So I don't think that it was ever referred directly back to committee to ask that a warrant be prepared, but it was referred back to committee for further consideration of whether or not we move forward with this project and what would be necessary to move forward with this project. And at this point, to move forward with this project, you would need a warrant authorizing the auditor to expend the $90,000, and you would also need, in my opinion, if you're going to give anybody any money, you would need a promissory note securing that obligation.
I think if you go back and check other ordinances, you will find there's always a referral to committee requesting the auditor to issue a warrant to pay X number of dollars to someone. That's your.
Probably is, but not on every.
That's your transparency, to say that you don't need to do that, that we've got the splash pad in committee, that's good enough. We can do all this other stuff.
We can. We authorized the service safety director to go out to. We authorized the service safety director to go out to bid and enter into contract, and the second half of all of that legislation says, and we authorize the auditor to issue warrant or warrants from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations in payment thereof.
Well, as usual, I, you know, I disagree, but...
I thought we were doing pretty good. I agreed with you tonight.
Don't we do that for every, every, when we're requiring anything like that that goes up in bid? It's already done, and we approve it in a committee and send it there.
Yeah.
And it's already done.
Well, we're not going out to bids. This isn't a going out to bid piece where you have that.
Well, what the difference is, it's going to be done. I mean...
All right, let's, I'd like a motion to issue a warrant for, and prepare the note, right?
Great.
For the splash pad.
So moved.
The $90,000, and we've got all the language, you've got all the language, right?
Susan?
Yeah, I mean, I would guess you would need a motion to authorize the city auditor to prepare a warrant or warrants in payment of the $90,000 requested by Kiwanis, and also authorizing the service safety director or the city mayor to enter into a promissory note, which would secure payment, repayment of that amount. That's what you need.
Can I have that motion?
So moved.
As an emergency.
As an emergency.
I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
You have that right. But didn't do much good. All right, so we've got that taken care of. Any open projects?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there you go. Been waiting all night.
I've been waiting all night for this. Fund 271, the local government fiscal recovery act money, which has been inappropriately referred to as ARPA money, which ARPA was in the previous year. Fund currently sits with unappropriated funds of $424,486.28, of which our administration says we don't want to spend that to pay for our safety forces, we want to hang on to it in case we have a building that needs fixed or a project we want to do. Well, of that $424,486.28, I would like to make a motion requesting emergency legislation to transfer $75,000 to the swimming pool fund, and then $50,000 to the police department civilian salary line, which recover the dispatchers, which the chief has indicated that he has about $50,000 short. That leaves the remaining $299,486.28 I would like to appropriate to the fire department salary line item, which we've been told that we want to cut our overtime at the fire department because we don't have the money. We've got the money, this will get us through the year. So again, I'll reiterate my motions for emergency legislation for $75,000 appropriated to the swimming pool fund, $50,000 to the police department civilian salary line item, and $299,486.28 to the fire department salary line item.
I talked to Jeff Wagner about that, he says it's too late to hire people for the swimming pool this year. He usually hires them by February, and we're into March, he says he don't think he can hire people. So, that being said, I don't know.
Okay, if we can't hire people, it won't open then?
No.
Which means the money would be appropriated, and if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used, and it goes back into the general fund. Am I correct?
Goes back in the same fund it come out of.
At least we can try. I'll second the motion.
We can try. It won't guarantee...
You want to, with all of that, and no offense, Kevin, I know you know what you're talking about most of the time, but, I mean, you, you just said, oh, we got, let's spend it on this, this, and this, and I've heard nothing from, I'd like to have some discussion on it, but it's your...
I'll discuss it all night long.
That's just, that's a band-aid for one year, what's going to happen after that?
Well, for starters, the money that we authorized as back pay to the fire department, that was money from last year, but it was taken out of this year's salary line item, which is why we're short and why they're trying to save, save that money. That should have never came out of this year's salary line item. So then what this is doing, that's replacing that.
Still, what are you going to do next year? That's a band-aid, Kevin.
No, next year, we don't have that $300,000 that we have to back pay.
But we're not going to have no money to pay them anyhow.
Yeah, we're bringing in an extra eight...
We're not going to have the $400,000 to pay them for this year.
You know, the problem I've had is the truth hasn't been told because we're talking about the extra overtime, we're talking about $400,000 of overtime, nobody's mentioned that we're bringing in $832,000 extra dollars running EMS that we never would have brought in without EMS.
I, we have never seen that, so I don't...
I gave you a report on it, I broke every number down to the penny for you.
But that's supposed, must be in the budget somewhere, we're not, you know, it has to be. So I don't, I'll never, I won't vote for it, so it don't matter, in my opinion. Sure.
What's the levy passes?
If the levy passes and we don't need all that money, it goes back to where it came from.
You're good.
Same as the swimming pool argument.
Then we wait till see if it passes.
I made a motion to appropriate the money this evening, and Mark seconded it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nope, opposed.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm opposed to it, but I, I don't get a vote, right?
Yes, you do.
No, but not unless it's tied.
The chair can vote and make a tie as a one.
Well, I'm opposed not to do those things, that I don't have enough information to do that at this point. I'd like, you know, if the auditor could report out on that, that would be great.
This was my 2:30 meeting with her today, she gave me all these numbers.
Well, I understand that.
Yep. I have to throw a wrench in anything, but then you go back to Vicki's point about whether this is actually in committee and whether legislation can be prepared if it wasn't referred to committee.
Budgets and open project, I'll second that.
I mean, I, I think you're probably right, but I would have to look at that. I don't know.
I don't know, I, I just think it deserves more discussion than just, just that, so I don't know, call me up, whatever, but...
So what's your vote?
My vote's no.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
And nothing, you know, nothing against anyone.
No, I don't take it personally.
I'm just...
We'll have our next Tuesday council meeting where I'm going to bring it forth from the floor.
That's fine. Closing arguments.
Last time this happened was when the downtown seating was getting done. Wanda voted to make a tie, and it was 2-2, it stalled it out in committee, and then the only way it got passed was full council voted to waive the rules because they knew they had five votes, other than the two that voted in committee, and then that's how the downtown seating finally got passed. Because it was Mark that, Mark's the one that called for the special vote on that.
I intend to do that at the next Tuesday meeting.
Mike Castro, 130 Brentwood Street. Gentlemen, sitting out in the gallery again, listening. Kevin, excellent work on the numbers. Accurate, right to the penny, giving the different things, and I have no doubt, no reason doubt what you're saying. But with where you appear to be at, bring the monies forward again, bring these issues forward, and sit there and look at it. And I think that's what I just heard you say, that you're going to keep bringing this forward to whoever. The one part I'm very disappointed to hear, that I listened to a few minutes ago, was Mr. Spiegel talked to somebody, February's passed, and oh, God forbid, this is what, March 9th or 10th, and we can't hire anybody for the pool? I went through my whole life, with some of it, some good and bad, I've never started out with saying it can't be done, or we can't do it because we're 10 days late. This is an open thing, you haven't even tried yet. That's very disappointing. Now, we're fighting for the survival of the city, gentlemen and ladies. You've been going through your budgets, you're trying to survive. Quit taking the negative approach. Sit down, look at the figures, put it together, put your heads together. I've told you many times, I respect this council. You guys can work through the problems. Do it. Don't take the negative attitude. Don't take a negative attitude from your city employees that they can't do something. Tell them to try, tell them to go out and do it. That's what they're being paid for. That's what I've been told a few times in my life, and I imagine everybody in this room has been. Work on it, gentlemen. I think it can be done.
Zion Hickman, 849 South Sandusky Avenue. Have my opposition to the splash pad, it's nothing against the Kiwanis, but I have a question. Why are we trying so hard to get this done this year? Is it in writing somewhere that it has to be done this year, or is it for someone's self-image? Like, why, why is this so important? Why does this have to be done this year if we don't have a pool that's even functioning this year? Just a question.
I don't know, we were given funding, and we started last year about this time, talking about this with the funds we had, and we get to the end of the year. In fact, it was even talked about that we were going to put in this splash pad this year, or which may have been last, last year, we were going to put it in, and then when Kiwanis come up with, had their money, we were considering putting one on in the lion's field. I mean, I had talked to Doug about that, and he, he liked that idea too, so, but financially, we've fallen on dire straits, and so...
So then if I can interrupt you real quick, I'm sorry. What is the issue with waiting until the next year to put it in?
Well, we've got half the work done.
Yeah.
A portion of the work done.
I don't think that there's necessarily an issue, but we've already put the infrastructure down.
Right.
And so if we're going to do it and make it viable for this summer, it's either now or never. And so we went out for bid, the bids came in because they understand it's public money, so in my opinion, the bids came in above what the city, way above what the city was willing to pay, and so we now are trying to rework it with the Kiwanis Club so that they can privately work with the manufacturers so that they get a custom-built thing which they want at an affordable price. That's why this discussion is happening now, because we tried to do it through the city, through the public bid process, and, and it was, it was expensive.
So then, so in terms of construction, it has to be done within a certain timeframe?
It, I mean, it doesn't have to be, but if we're going to do it...
The infrastructure's already there.
Right.
It's like a half-finished basement, and, you know...
Right.
It'll deteriorate if you don't finish it and leave it sit there, and who knows what would happen to it.
Right. But if that wasn't there, and that's a big what-if, what would be the issue with waiting? Like, if that wasn't there, why couldn't we just wait another year?
Well, you just answered that.
Right, so, just a question.
Well, real quickly, I'll give you the story of the swimming pool. Some of us remember when the swimming pool didn't open, they were told, we were told, we're going to shut it down a little early, a couple weeks early, get started on it. Nothing happened until spring. Well, the spring was wet, well, the reason that they were going to shut it down early is so it could get started on it, hopefully get it opened that following year. Well, the spring was too wet, we couldn't get in there. So then it dragged on a whole nother year, so it was almost two years before they got that.
Due to the contractor also...
And, and they got a contractor that was, yeah, like in bankruptcy or something. Anyhow, so, so, you know, we have some experience that we like to strike when we can, because, you know, the other thing is if we wait a year or two...
Cost could go up again.
The cost is going to go up, so, and that, we ran into that with the, with the water treatment plant. We come out with the $30 million, was it $30 million plant, and then Roger put it on hold because, you know, the economy or safety forces was down and everything, we put that on hold, and we ended up with the, we still ended up with a $30 million plant, but it would have cost us $22 million if we would have done it the, the years when we, when we planned on doing it, so...
So, so it's, basically, we do it now, so have to pay more for it later, basically?
That's going to be, probably be an issue, yeah. Everything goes up, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Except our tax revenue. Okay.
Hey, it's up in the first two quarters, or first two months.
All right. All right, I'm going to adjourn at 8:11.